So first of all, thank you for finding time to meet with us. Or to give some more feedback on this piece of legislation. Obviously, things kind of happen fast right now. And we wanted to get more feedback because there are parts of the legislation that we hadn't specifically discussed. And I just appreciate all the work that Kathleen and Bill have done putting this together so quickly so that we could have this discussion. So Kathleen, I'm wondering if you, and actually, let me just go over what the process is for this. It's the same with all the others. What we do is we generally direct our lobbyists and our staff to follow what's in our legislative platform. And then we have some broad topics in our policy generally. So we have policy around those, but there are specific pieces in this that aren't addressed. So in this case, we're calling a special meeting, which is pretty unusual that we do this. And then the next step will be that if we can provide some direction to staff on their proposed amendments, then I think we'll work with, are we going to work with CASE or CASB or with our lobbyists or all three on this one? All three? Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll send the amendments to Ernestine. And then meanwhile, Kathleen Sullivan will be working with her peers at CASB. And forgive me if I'm wrong, Bill Sutter, you'll be working at CASE. Is that how that's going to work? Okay. And so then the topics we're going to discuss are the topics that are in the memo in Kathleen's, is what Kathleen put in her memo. And also, are we thinking of fiscal note as well? Yes? Maybe?
The fiscal note from the state won't be out until like Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
They're putting it together this weekend.
All right. So Kathleen, do you want to kick us off and talk about the part number one that you outlined?
I have a point of order.
Yes.
Should we be taking role?
Work sessions, do we take role?
Oh, I thought this was a meeting. Never mind.
We'll call.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay. And it's for everyone. Thank you.
Good question, Kitty. All right, Kathleen?
Okay, so last night, I emailed out just a summary of a red line document. I think Laura Schaper, if you're able to link the red line, there are definitely staff members on this call who would not have had access to that. We also will make sure we put it on the public facing board docs so that it's available. So the red line that I did, I tried to take a light hand and just highlight, oh, sorry, Laura.
It's on there. It's on board docs now.
Okay, thank you. So I focused on just a few key areas around which I had had input from staff and also from Bill's communications with colleagues through CASE and mine through CASB. So there were a few, just some technical pieces that you might see redlined that were cross references that can get really clunky over time if you put them in law. But the main focus areas, one comes from my conversation with our families and students and staff around Title IX. When we look at responding to students who've been subjected to trauma, that the language in the field is moving towards healing centered approaches rather than trauma focused. I compare it to a difference in terminology, just like victim and survivor. I'm not sure that trauma centered will be the concept that ultimately reflects the best practice of the field. So I wanted to draw that point out for some consideration. Eliminating reference to trauma informed or trauma centered would still leave language in the bill emphasizing preventative and restorative approaches to student conduct. So I wanted to point that piece out for discussion. The primary...
Well, should we stop there and talk about that Kathleen? Or do you want to move on?
No, I would love for the board to have discussion.
Okay. So the board members, how do you feel about that change in the language?
Yeah, it sounds reasonable to me. One of the issues I have with this whole thing is codifying this into law instead of having the state board issue, you know, rules that can be modified as, you know, standards change.
Okay.
The trauma informed decisions that are being made currently even in Boulder Valley, even as it relates to our UIP, I'm thinking more about the language that was presented to us from Sanchez Elementary School where they talked a lot about trauma and the root causes of what's happening with, with our children at Sanchez and many, and many other schools. So my question is, if that's taken out, are we going to revamp all of our language that takes out trauma informed decisions of root causes? Give me a little bit more about that Kathleen in terms of what we'll do with that.
Sure. So that, my suggestion would, would not require us to not talk about trauma with students. I do think that's a really important aspect of building school culture. My concern is that this would embed that concept in statute in a way that wouldn't let it change as the field talks about it. So it wouldn't be to say that we're not going to talk about trauma, but instead of prescribing and putting in black letter law that then becomes hard to change, embedding that concept of trauma centered wouldn't allow us to continue to shift with the field. So this, yeah, this is really language that I hear from advocates in our community and people that feel like they're maybe a step ahead of working with students with trauma.
Give me the, the language that you proposed in terms of trauma informed again, what was that?
So where it appears in the, in the bill now, it, it reads, and it appears four or five times, as part of a phrase that says, use preventative, restorative, and trauma-informed approaches. So my suggestion is just that we don't include trauma informed there because then it's embedded. So the language would say, use preventative and restorative approaches. I believe that restorative does have the implication that we look at that whole child and we make sure we're addressing that, all of that child's needs, but doesn't lock us into thinking that maybe very 2021 when you're looking at this law again in 2028.
Yeah, and I'm going to just jump into, in general, as a board, we look for legislation that gives us flexibility so we can adapt to our community. And one of the questions I asked our lobbyist about this piece of legislation, because it has a lot of prescriptive language in it, much of which we already have agreed with in our district, I just wanted to make sure this legislation was going to pass. So the, and so the idea is that it is going to pass, and that's why it's worth our time to make sure that it gives us the room that we need to do the work that we've already agreed to do. We don't need to use this legislation to put further restrictions on us unless that's something we really want to do. It's just something to think about when we think about legislation because then we need to be audited and reported. And we have embedded that concept already in our policies. So that's part of the question is, it's not that, it's not disagreeing with the idea of trauma, it's simply that we're not putting ourselves in a trauma only type of situation. We're also going to be moving ahead with this healing centered theory at the same time and give us the latitude to do that. So I just wanted to make that point as well. So how does everyone feel about removing, so Richard, do you have more questions about the idea of keeping the language a little broader to preventative and restorative?
Well, I looked at trauma and what it, what it means and descriptions of trauma, and they talked about a lot of stuff in trauma. And I don't know whether just using restorative practices is going to take care of kids that come from homes that have experienced trauma, and what kind of services will we be providing in those particular kids or not? You know, I, I, I'm not sure about that yet.
Okay, other board members? Anyone?
This is just the trauma informed care piece you're asking about?
Yeah, whether we're okay taking out the language as Kathleen's recommended to give us a broader, more flexible approach to our restorative and preventative practices.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I think for, for those of us who work in education or in social work, which is many of us here, it's something we would think of as a term of art. And if we're moving into something that better expresses what we're doing, that I can see Kathleen's point.
Okay, other board members? Want to weigh in? Okay, well, let's move on to the next one. We can always come back to something. All right.
So I did make a few other red lines, President Marquez. I don't know if you want me to point those out or if you'd like me to just talk about the, really the, the other main area that I summarized for the board.
The other main area, I think.
Okay. So this bill, in a few places, acts to put a limitation on the role of law enforcement in schools, which I certainly understand and is something that this board has talked about. Where it amounts to really a prohibition on the engagement of law enforcement to deal with certain types of conduct, I'm very concerned about the section that says, law enforcement cannot issue a summons or arrest for, and then there's a list of about 12 different crimes that are currently in Colorado law for which schools would not be able to call law enforcement and ask them to come. I put some examples in the hypothetical. So some of the crimes that would be included on this list are interference with staff, faculty, or students of educational institutions. And if you're looking at the red line, this is on page 13. Disorderly conduct as defined by the criminal code, trespass or interference at a public building, second degree criminal trespass involving a motor vehicle, criminal mischief, harassment, possession of drug paraphernalia, misdemeanor menacing, and obstructing a peace officer, firefighter, or emergency service provider. So the red line you'll notice does not identify or propose eliminating all of those limitations. But I think it's very important for the board to think about the flexibility that we want to have in schools on a day-to-day basis if they encounter student conduct that puts that community at risk in the professional's opinion, whether we want law enforcement to be able to be engaged. So the three hypotheticals that I put in that I believe would be prohibited by this law would be, we find a hypodermic syringe on a student at school, we find a crack pipe, those are both drug paraphernalia where we would not be able to have a summons or an arrest issued around either of those items. We also would not be able to have a summons or an arrest in the event that we had a student who appeared on campus even though they were told they could not be on campus due to a threat assessment that had been completed. That student could hang out near the entrance of the building, they could roll a couple of joints. All of those would be offenses that would be limited by the current language of this bill, would be interference, petty marijuana possession, and, and one of the other offenses that I redlined, that student could decline the leave, that student could block the entrance where students were trying to come and go, and law enforcement would not be able to take action to remove the student from that area. And also, I was really surprised by this one, but if you look at the definition of harassment in the bill, this is actually an offense that was created in 2015 out of circumstances that were alleged to have happened in Douglas County where a student was cyber bullied and attempted to take her own life and is permanently disabled. It's called Kiana Ariano's Law. And we would not be able to have law enforcement respond in those events. So the red line left in place, restrictions on the use of law enforcement for things like low-level theft. If we know a pair of air buds have been stolen, we can address that as student misconduct. That would not warrant law enforcement involvement. I don't see that as a risk to school safety. It also would leave in place limitations on using law enforcement for alcohol violations or for petty marijuana violations.
And to put caution about the marijuana and the alcohol, because it's illegal, I think, to use drugs if you're under 21. But we don't have to, we're, so we'd be saying in this case, we're, and I'm not trying to criminalize those things, but in any case, we would say that we're not going to escalate drug or alcohol use to law enforcement.
That's what this bill would require, yes. It would prohibit law enforcement from issuing a ticket or making an arrest for an alcohol or a petty marijuana offense, which includes possession or consumption by a minor. Those are status offenses, which are considered to be misdemeanor or petty offenses.
Okay, and we don't have any obligation in any other kind of law or statute that we're supposed to enforce the law, right?
Um, no, actually, I think in the mandatory referral, there is a requirement that we refer for marijuana. Is my colleague Sullivan in Sullivan on the line? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I am. Let me look at something real quick on that Title 22.
I believe that's right, President Marquez. And I could look at that and find that citation because to the extent this bill needs to do it, they need to remove from our mandatory referral language that we call on those offenses. So we would need to suggest that as an amendment.
Okay, yeah, because I just feel like I had read that somewhere, so I wasn't really sure how we could have two laws that say the opposing things. Because that would be hard. Okay, so board members, how, what do you feel about these red lines that Kathleen is suggesting? Kitty?
Well, I have a question in how this law would intersect with the Claire Davis Act. That's a concern I have. And obviously interfering with a reporting is a problem too.
I think that's a really important question. I think that the items are connected because they both have implications for school safety. The Claire Davis School Safety Law was an amendment to the governmental immunity section. So they operate within that same broad context of Colorado law, but there isn't a direct connection. And I would say that that's what this red line is based on. When we have offenses that may be indicative of prelude to or associated with a legitimate risk, we need our professionals, my suggestion is, we need our professionals to be able to engage law enforcement to make sure that they're taking all action to prevent a reasonably foreseeable act of school violence.
Right, because I'm thinking that first example with the kid who was rolling joints and hanging out and preventing people from coming in. If that kid had been on the radar already as somebody who could potentially be violent, what they're doing in your scenario would be prohibited from being reported, correct? Or prohibited from the law enforcement being engaged.
Yeah, law enforcement would not be able to issue a ticket, a summons, or make an arrest in that circumstance. So while they might be willing to respond in that circumstance, they would be limited and, and we really should not be seeking their involvement because we just have to tell them to talk the student down like we can. They would not have the ability to remove the student, issue a summons, and, and require the student to leave the property.
Yeah, I mean, I like the, the theory behind this. I just am concerned about the details.
Lisa?
Thanks, and I should apologize in advance. It's been a crazy morning with work, so I didn't give this red line the attention it deserves before this meeting. So I'm kind of trying to catch up as we're talking. But having said that, I think that I prefer the bill without the red line. I understand the concerns that you're addressing, but it seems to me like the goal here is to find alternative ways to handle these issues without tickets or arrests. That we could still be calling an officer to the school if we felt like we had a situation that potentially could escalate quickly, and if it did escalate, officers on the scene could handle that. But that in the short term, if somebody's doing these things, we're trying to push them into social workers or other kinds of counseling or interventions rather than getting them, getting them into the jail system. I, I think I like it.
Kathleen, does the bill give us that flexibility for escalation?
I'm not sure I know how to answer that question. The bill is written as a restriction against law enforcement taking really their two official actions, right? Issuing some a ticket or summons or an arrest to respond to the behavior that falls within these classes crimes that currently exist in Colorado law. So would they come to the school because we said we had what is just currently interference? So in that first hypothetical, if you've got a student blocking the entrance and, and acting in an escalated way, would they show up and then wait for the behavior to escalate to something further? Would they attempt to de-escalate and then maybe there'd be no need? It's possible.
Or could I mention, I mean, it seems like there would also be room to have a conversation, right? That if staff felt like law enforcement would be useful to have them come and talk about, you know, that something like this isn't going to lead to an arrest or a ticket today because it can't on school property, but that do they understand, you know, sort of the consequences of these actions outside of school grounds, et cetera? And that, you know, I mean, and so on and so forth. But it feels like there are opportunities for engagement that just don't lead to arrest and ticketing.
So I guess the one question is, so we as a school board can do what we want in our district. The question is, do we want it in statute to have these prohibitions, these restrictions on us? Or do we see that there would be cases where we wouldn't want these restrictions, but we have the local control to do what we want? So I think that's part of this issue is, we don't need the legislation to define us, but they are looking to restrict us. If it's important that we restrict ourselves this way because the idea is that we want every district restricted this way, that's one thing. The other is, we don't want these specific restrictions because we're not sure how this is going to play out yet. And our district is already committed to de-escalate without law enforcement, but we want to have the option in certain scenarios, which we may not have thought about, to call them, which is kind of where I am. I'm probably supportive of this red line at this point, knowing that our district can do what it needs to do to limit law enforcement, but keeping a door open in case there are unforeseen circumstances that aren't contemplated in this legislation. Other board members?
That's what worries me. I feel singularly unequipped to be able to think this through without input from our principals and our teachers. I still remember that when we did a zero tolerance policy for teachers, that it sounded really good, but it didn't work well in implementation. So I would love to get some feedback to what, to the actual, real-life, on-the-ground circumstances that you're talking about that we just don't have the experience with. That I just, the black and white pieces of the law like this just don't fit real life to me. And so I would like to have the flexibility to trust. I think what bothers me with the bill is it assumes that every one of us is a bad actor and that we're doing these things really badly. And there's no definition in the bill about disproportionality. We already know we have that issue, but what does that look like and how is it defined? And then we're all, we're all doing these things. I mean, I was horrified, as I think all of us were, in the recent Douglas County case. I mean, that was just an absolutely horrible case. But you can't make your law around those kinds of really horrible cases. So I'm, I'm struggling with where the right balance is on this without more information from our staff. Does that make, I mean, I really appreciate, and I, and I understand, Kathleen, this is like, you've seen these kinds of bills two or three times before. So I'm just curious, do we know what sparked this? Do we know if there's room for compromise? Do we know what the conversation needs to be around it? It's an, it's an important conversation I'm just trying to get context to.
Can someone remind me what the Douglas County case was?
It was a young kid who was autistic who was put in a police car for hours, I think that's what it was, wasn't it?
With handcuffs.
With handcuffs. It was just an awful, awful case.
And jailed, jailed with a $25,000 bond.
Right, and, yeah, it was, it was awful.
Yeah, this red line does not touch the language that would prohibit law enforcement from using handcuffs with our young children. Definitely. And I, I certainly understand the, the board's concern about this, and I look forward to your recommendation in being able to support any language that you believe would, would better, would better serve that purpose. I think that Kathy, or Board Member Gephardt, you asked where this, where this bill came from, and I, we've seen several versions since 2015 at least. I know that Zenzinger is one of the sponsors of this bill and was instrumental in establishing the requirement that our enforcement agencies keep arrest and summon data. As we've got, begun to collect that data over the last five years, I think it's very clear to anyone who's looking at it that we do see students subjected to more serious discipline on the basis of race. We see more exclusionary discipline, and we see the same disproportionality in our law enforcement data. So I understand and think that this is, has built on years of work in Colorado to try and address equitable discipline. And I think a lot of this bill does that. A lot of the requirements that good data be collected and shared publicly and analyzed is what this board has already required in the policies you adopted last June, in the strategic plan, and in the unified improvement plan.
I have a concern that the whole spirit of the law is to prevent this prison, school to prison pipeline. And one of the major factors of the school to prison pipeline is the ticketing and the summons. So I, I don't think I'm in favor of the red line. I think I'm more, more concerned about, not, not so much our district because I think we're in the right place, but there are examples. I mean, the Douglas is an example is just one, but I bet you there's others. And the research that was done prior to the drafting of the bill as it relates to how kids get to prison and, and where it starts. So the spirit of the law, I think if you, if you take that off, I think it guts that whole thing. My, my opinion.
Okay, other board members? And have we received any feedback from staff at the secondary level about whether this would be an issue or is this all happening so fast?
I can tell you that with the cycle under which it has, this bill has been introduced, and we've been looking at the language, that I've worked with Bill Sutter and attorneys, and with Brendan Sullivan, but I'm looking, for example, at wonderful Ginger Ramsey, and I have not spoken to her. We did not go out to our principals this week before spring break and ask for this input on their legislation, but, but we can do whatever would be useful to the board.
So it sounds like...
Tina, Bill's had his hand raised for a little bit.
Oh, sorry, Bill. You know, I don't see those little hands. That's terrible.
Quite all right.
Quite all right. Um, I just wanted to, uh, speak a little bit to the, uh, sort of input from staff piece. So, and the, the fiscal note side. So the way the fiscal note gets written is, uh, applicable to the entire state, right? The cost to all districts, it might be broken up, small, medium, and large districts. Um, the way, uh, so, um, with help from Kathleen, in the original format of the bill, not the red line, uh, the suggestion was multiple days of training for school administrators, registrars, classroom teachers, uh, and bus drivers, uh, folks that are usually involved in the discipline action, you know, students on a regular basis. Um, so, so the question of whether, you know, what would this look like is very different from if we had to implement this. We're suggesting three to five days of training per person to be more informed about how to deal with the original language of the bill. Uh, also some additional FTE to engage with CDE from the reporting requirements. Um, so, so that's kind of the, the construct of what would be required to implement and train staff in an adequate way to, to address the original version. Um, from the, um, we got a note from CASE, uh, so we're going to discuss it at the, uh, April 2nd, Friday, legislative meeting. And, uh, the statement was that the, uh, sponsor, the bill sponsors were open to, uh, amendments. So not, uh, it's happening absolutely the way it's introduced, but that they were open to having the conversation of, uh, school districts and CASE and so.
Lisa, and then Kitty.
I just want to agree that I think this is at the crux of the pipeline issue. Um, and this isn't a, a new issue where I, I think we could be accused of trying to solve it with overreach. I mean, this is something that's been going on forever and it's exacerbating, and it feels like smaller fixes haven't worked. So I think, um, looking for further constraints, more meaningful constraints on our ability to ticket and arrest on campus, not necessarily in, in BBSD, but across, uh, across our state, just feels incredibly useful to me, and it feels like a large scale, meaningful change is needed.
Okay, Kitty?
So I have a couple of questions. Um, where does CASB stand on this? And where does CASE stand on this? That's my first question.
Well, the, the lawyers have met, but the CASB LRC has not met on it.
Okay.
And I asked, um, where the Rural Alliance is, and they're looking at it too. So I think it's come out pretty quickly, I think, is that right, Kathleen? So it has not made its way. We've had other bills that have kind of taken precedence over it, but I think it'll make its way to LRC eventually.
Um, also, could this be addressed through the State Board or CDE without having it written in stone? I mean, I am all in favor of, you know, getting rid of the over disciplining, especially of, you know, the kids who are, you know, overrepresented in the criminal justice system. But I have a real concern about putting all of it into state law where it's the hardest way to adapt it. So could it be addressed through the State Board or, and/or CDE?
And Rob, your hand is up. Are you looking to respond to Kitty?
Yes, um, and then just, just provide just a few thoughts. Uh, first and foremost, I do agree with the spirit of this bill. Um, I think that you could hold up the actions that this board and our district have taken over the past eight months as an example for others to follow in regards to owning the disproportionality in arrests and disciplines and trying to rectify that. Um, uh, to, to answer your question directly, Kitty, I think that as we think about Senate Bill 19204, and as a reminder to the board, that was the Local Accountability System grants that we applied for in, uh, 2019 and were awarded. Uh, and, and if we think about the school performance frameworks, and I'm, and I'm not sure where that bill, um, is sitting, because I know that there's going to be a bill that, um, that is, is requesting, um, that an audit be done of the way that, that we think about school performance and accountability. I do think that that's a place where this could sit. Um, to the extent that, um, this is important enough to our community and to our state, um, to Richard's point, to address appropriately the school's role in the school to prison pipeline. Um, you know, in regards to, to, to some of the language, I do think that there's some good things in here. I do think that there are some, that, that, that engaging, um, school principals and, and school staff and counselors, um, and our special education staff, I think is, is important to, to get a holistic picture of some impacts. Um, this, this bill, in my opinion, seeks to make some bold changes that I think are long overdue. Um, I think that as we think about what some of the unintended consequences of some of the things in the bill would be, I think that we would want to talk to folks that, um, that are on the ground as a way to, to get some more information. And finally, one of the other advocacy points for this board in regards to, um, more sufficient funding for special education and ID DEA, both at the federal and state level, I think is an important piece as well. Um, and we think this with, without, without the, and, and I, and I think that, um, it's just going to take more than training to solve this issue. I think that you're going to need to have levels of expertise, uh, levels of expertise that we'll be looking to bring to this board, um, as we bring forward our budget recommendations as part of the disproportionate discipline and removal of SROs. Um, folks that are, are experienced in de-escalation and experienced. I think it's going to take more people and training. Um, and so the fiscal note piece, I think, is something that's, um, there is going to be certainly a financial impact um, uh, on school districts. And, and, um, I think that these are the right things that the state should be, be driving dollars toward to, to fund, uh, um, to, to begin to tackle this big issue. So, uh, just, just some thoughts, um, from me on kind of the, the bill and Kitty's questions.
Is there, um, a way, I get, and maybe this is for Bill or Rob, how likely is it that we'll get funding to help implement this bill?
I, there's very, very few examples of the legislature, uh, attaching dollars for districts, um, to bills other than through grants. Uh, and so that would probably be a terrible way to implement this, say, hey, if you want to do it, here's a grant you can apply for to do it. That seems poor. Um, so they would say, congratulations, we proposed an increase in funding for this year. Uh, therefore you can spend that, those resources on implementing this.
Okay.
A quick question. Talk to me a little bit about EARS grants. I know that we have state funding or state opportunities already for preventing high school dropouts, et cetera. Uh, and this particular bill, uh, also gives additional opportunity for school districts to apply for that, but it's a grant, like you said, uh, a bill, and, and I understand that. Uh, but does it open it up a little bit broader in terms of how districts can apply for grants from the State Department of Education? And I think I would want to look at more parameters around, uh, how limited that would be and, and how helpful that would be.
I did not see a reference to a grant program, although I admittedly didn't read it full detail, uh, the whole way. Um,
There is a section towards the end, and maybe, Bill, you can take a look at it. When I read it, um, I believe that it's just cleanup mostly. There was a pilot program initially, so they're striking some language around the pilot program. Um, they do specifically talk about non-public schools, but it looks like they're, they're really just language shifts, although they do change the percentage. There's a section at the top of page, um, it's on page 29. So this is 27, 28, and 29 of the bill.
Okay.
But I think it looks like, um, if you look on page 28, it says the State Board was awarding at least 45% of the monies to a certain person, uh, to certain programming, and now it shifted to at least 50%. If you see that on 29. I know we do have a new EARS grant program in the district this year serving, um, our population of students who are at risk of being expelled or who are currently involved with the criminal justice system. Um, it's a really amazing program that ties in a lot of mental health support. It's housed, um, on the Arapaho Ridge campus. It's called the ELTS program. That might be something that the board would be interested in for a news and notes item where we could give some more detail about it.
Agreed. Um, so how, I have a question. Well, wait, uh, does someone else have their hand up? I have a question on how restrictive the restrictions are for calling law enforcement? And is it just a never ever, or are, are there ways to do it?
I don't think this language would prevent us from calling. It acts as a limitation on law enforcement in what they can do. So that determination would really be made by law enforcement.
Okay. And, and then we'd have to figure out if we called on a person who was using marijuana, which is very common, we're not sure what would happen then. Is that correct? Because that's illegal?
Under the current language, including this current red line, which doesn't strike petty marijuana offenses, if law enforcement responded, I suppose they could take the drugs, but they couldn't issue any sort of ticket or arrest.
Okay, but we're going to clarify it with the other law that's out there that says we're supposed to enforce that.
Well, right, and we'll have to look at federal law too, which I think does have some implications around drugs at school.
Okay. Because I think that gets us really confusing. Um, and then the other piece is, there's another piece of legislation that is asking that bullying be added as grounds for expulsion and suspension. And it seems to be working oppositionally with this bill, I think. I don't know if that bill's going anywhere. Is anyone watching that one too?
I have not seen that, Bill. I will tell you, I think our expulsion language is a little odd in Colorado. It's very tied again to criminal law. That's one of the things I think that can be really challenging. We, we need our principals and our people, um, intervening with students to really know what those boundaries are. And it's challenging already because the grounds for expulsion comes straight out of criminal code. I do think we'd have the ability, the way the law reads now, to expel for very serious bullying. But the current bill that the board is debating would mean that a student, um, law enforcement could not issue a summons or arrest if that behavior, harassing behavior, was happening at school events or on school grounds.
Okay. Okay. Other thoughts or questions? Rob?
Kathleen, the offenses that are listed specifically in the bill, do we know how those were the ones that were selected? I mean, were those the ones that, um, that we were finding that were most typically aligned to this kind of school to prison pipeline? I, I mean, that might be informative to know and understand how that those, those infractions were selected out of all of the infractions, right, to, to put on there? And, and it might just create some clarity, right? Was, was there a study done to say these are the most, most abused or overused? Um, to, to, or are these, were these the most hyped? Like, I mean, I think there had to have been some type of, of work that was done to select these that might, might provide insight on, on, on why those were the ones that were selected.
I think that's an excellent question, and I don't have background on that, but I can certainly find out.
Okay. Any other questions? I think one option is, um, I've heard from two members that they don't want to accept the red lines. Um, I probably am in favor of the red lines, but if staff were to say that it's not a big deal and that doesn't matter, I'd be okay not doing the red lines. It would really be, I, for me, it's more about, do we have, do our staff have what they need um, to deal with situations, especially in the interim until we get training and personnel? Um, I have a huge concern that if we don't get money to do some of this, um, whether we can, I mean, we've agreed to it internally, but I really don't like unfunded mandates. Um, so on principle, I'll have an issue with that personally. Um, and that's just a, you know, that's just part of the Colorado education his, you know, culture. Everything seems to be free and nothing, our staff work for free, we're all volunteers. So I probably will have a huge issue if it doesn't have a fiscal note on it that's funded. So, um, any other thoughts? Do we want to meet again on it when we get a little more information? Kitty?
Gina, I agree with you, and like I said, I'm against putting this into the code altogether. But if we have to, I prefer the red line over, you know, specifying everything just because you don't know what unintended consequences they're going to be. And fixing a law is the hardest way to fix unintended consequences.
Kathleen?
I just was wondering, and maybe Brendan can answer this later, what kind of training are our law enforcements going through too to help with this? I mean, I think this is a partnership, and it would be really helpful to know, um, what other kinds of training opportunities are out there for law enforcement to help with this? And it, what their position is on this. It's not going to influence me, I'm just curious, um, what their reaction is to this.
I can ask, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Right, if they, if they were to come back, Gina, and say something I hadn't thought of, that this is going to jeopardize student safety and school safety because of X, Y, Z, I would want to consider that. And I'm just not in law enforcement, and I don't think that way. So I would love to know what the thinking is on that.
Well, and there, there's also an issue. This legislation only applies on school property or at a school event. So the same kids can be arrested for all of these misdemeanors where they spend the majority of their time, which is not on school property or not at school events. So I think it's worth a conversation, obviously as a community, to try to really get these summonses down because that is going to occur at parties on the weekend. You know, the, the minor drug and alcohol infractions, I'm sure, are pretty common and are not helpful to kids who are, you know, haven't, aren't making the best choices all the time and being, you know, unduly punished for it. So, um, so again, I think it's always good to remember this is actually a very small portion of the child's life in some ways.
How, how would you see having that community conversation? I like that idea. I think you're right.
Well, let Bill talk first.
Real quick, the fiscal note, uh, the fiscal note, um, went out to municipalities, uh, as well. So there may be, uh, something on that relative to, uh, police, sheriff, uh, interactions as well. But, I mean, it'll again be kind of focused on the financial aspects of it, but there might be something that gets applied to that, that'll be out there, you know, Monday or Tuesday next week.
Okay. All right, any other comments? We're kind of hitting our time, and I'm thinking we'll just get back together again after spring break. It's, it's not going to move that fast, is it? Anyone? Anyone? Could this be voted on anywhere by, next week when we're all gone?
Let me share, um, with, with Anya and Ernestine on kind of their insight on how fast this is moving. And I don't know that anybody here, um, had that, that insight. Um, but I would imagine that, um, coming back to this after, um, after spring break, we, we should have time to, 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 A, gather some of the information, you know, you know, clear up some of the, of the questions that I think have been had, and then have another conversation with the understanding that I think that, that there's, that from what I'm hearing from the board, there's a spirit to support this big idea. And that I think that the, the concern is coming around what are unintended consequences, um, you know, to what extent is there, does there need to be funding, the ongoing funding to support this? Um, Um, and then, you know, how could we make some adjustments and shifts to, to support the spirit of this bill, um, without, um, the unintended consequences and making sure that, that those, that those funding questions are answered?
So I, I asked for a meeting on Monday, the 29th, because we're going to meet with another legislative aide, I think. Um, so maybe I can append the time to that, if that, if this time, I've, I've been sort of trying to work around the lunch hour. Um, so, because I thought maybe it's a good time if we can't do the evening or the morning. So it seems like this is an okay time to meet back on the 29th. So, Laura, could we add like 30 minutes to the meeting? I already scheduled with Hannah.
I will do so. Do you want to put it before or after?
I don't know. Before.
Will do.
Great. Well, thank you all for getting together so quickly. Um, we may do it again if something else comes up that isn't directly covered by our legislative platform. Um, and then if, if you want to keep us updated, Rob, on sort of where this is and where it's going, that would be great. Awesome. All right. Thanks, everyone.